All right, are we ready? Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, and the time is 7:30 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Linda, can we have the roll call?
Keef offer.
Here.
Haven. Spruul.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. All right, do we have a, we have a quorum tonight, although we do not have Mayor Pro Tem Lydia DeHaven with us, but she's been excused. So do we have an approval of the agenda as presented?
I move that council approve the agenda for March 25th, 2025.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Keef offer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing under Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. After reading the items on the consent agenda, I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A, approval of the council work session slash special meeting and agenda minutes for March 11th, 2025. B, approval of the expenditure list for March 25th, 2025. C, approval of a change in corporation structure for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Campestrom Mexican Restaurant LLC located at 1430 East Main Street, Unit 6, Cortez. D, approval of a renewal application for a fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Asmireldas Ranchito Mexican, Mexico rest or store located at 2501 East Main Street, Cortez. E, approval of a renewal application for retail marijuana store license for Durango Organics LLP, DBA Dio Cortez located at 1013 East Main Street, Cortez. And F, approval of four special event permits for Cortez Retail Enhancement Association to host the Third Thursday's Event on June 19th, July 17th, August 21st, and September 18th, 2025. The Third Thursday events are held in Montezuma Park at the corner of Market Street and Montezuma Ave, Cortez. Would anyone like to see something removed for discussion, or do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Randall.
Lewis.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Buffer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to number three in our agenda, the Public Participation. There is no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of 30 minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. Thank you, Jeremy. All right, I'd like to invite Abby Herring to the podium. And then just state your name and the community you live in, and then the lights, there's the three-minute timer if you haven't done a public comment before, and your mic will cut off after three minutes. So, thank you.
I'm Abby Herring. I live in the community, and I am a local educator in Montezuma County, as well as I serve on the Safe Spaces, Safe Spaces Action Team in town. As well as recently, I started volunteering with the indoor skate park. And the reason I'm coming here to talk today is through this volunteering I've been doing with the indoor skate park, I have heard from a lot of the young people in the community about feelings of unsafety at the outdoor skate park. That's why they frequent the indoor skate park. And I just wanted to come and share a couple of things that have been identified for reasons for that feelings of unsafety that I think could be addressed by the city to really improve that space. So the first thing is the space is physically unsafe. It's eroding, it's in disrepair. And there had been a lot of talks of repairing it for the past year or two, and we haven't seen any action towards fixing this. Some contractors have been identified, but there hasn't been anyone contacted, as far as I know, to like put this plan into action. And so right now, it's physically unsafe to be skating on. The other thing is there's no lighting, which during the long summer months is fine, but especially in the short winter months, especially in dry winters like this, kids could be out skating when the weather's nice, but they can't because there's no lighting, so they don't feel safe to be there. One, they can't see where they're skating. And two, when there's no lighting, it encourages people that are unsafe to hang out in that youth space and make youth feel unsafe around there. And so I think two things that could go a long way towards making that space a lot more safe is to one, resurface it, and to two, add some lighting out there so that youth feel a lot more safe in that, in that area. And one of the reasons this is so important is because there's so little spaces left for youth to just kind of exist. Almost everywhere for youth to hang out costs money, or you have to be involved in a program. But young adults, like this skate park is a place where young adults like to hang out and just exist and be, and they don't have to pay to be there, and they can just express themselves. And it's one of the last places like that in town. And so I just really want to make sure preserving that space, that young people feel welcome in this community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I'd like to invite Nico.
Hello, City Council. I'm Nico Esco, and I'm speaking for the community of the skate park today. And I've heard from a lot of sources that things are, things are happening to take care of the skate park, but I also need to know that things are going to continue to happen for that space. Because not only is it a space that I have frequented since I was a very young child, I have watched it for the last 20 years just churn into a place that is unskatable, unmaintained, unless it's by a skateboarder or somebody that is just volunteering to commit time to be there and bring their own broom, their own supplies to actually fix things up there. I've witnessed skateboarders use Bondo to fix things. And I've seen this community grow a lot in the last few years. I actually work with SCYC, a local nonprofit. I have been doing a skateboarding program with them for the last four years, and I have been getting a surplus of 20 or more kids almost every single week. And that is an entire community that is just being completely ignored, and that absolutely breaks my heart. Because if you guys were in that same position and you had something you wanted to express and do, and that was being taken away right in front of your eyes, I can imagine you would feel pretty upset. And sorry, to be honest, I'm holding back some tears because to see it go from a space that kids use to kids or other people thinking that they can come there and cause harm to the youth that actually want to use that space is insanity, in my opinion. And we, as a community, have an obligation to make that a more safe space, to let kids express the art that they put up there, and to let them skateboard and do all the things that they want to do. Because like my friend Abby said, this is one of the very last free youth recreational spaces that we have, and ignoring it is not going to stand any longer. Because I will be here every single city council meeting until I see that changing. Because it is very important to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak, even if you didn't fill out a comment card? Go ahead. All right, yeah, you have three minutes. Start with your name and community.
Hi. What's that? My name is Veronica Winhausen. I actually live in the community of Delores, but I frequent the community of Cortez quite a bit. As I'm sure you know, Montezuma County is very connected, which was part of what makes it so great. I am also a skater. I'm a roller skater who actively avoids the Cortez Skate Park because of the safety issues. The few times that I have skated there, I have gotten very close to injuring myself due to the disrepair of the skate park. And so it's something that I just avoid now. I don't skate very much anymore, which is sad for me personally. But I also think that we need more safe spaces for youth in our community. And I know, as Abby said, I'm also on the Safe Spaces Action Team with Team Up. Youth don't feel very safe at the outdoor skate park, which is really unfortunate. And part of the reason is because it is physically unsafe. It is in disrepair, it hasn't been maintained. There are cracks, the transitions are uneven. But also because it's in disrepair, there are people who, like Nico said, are there to cause harm or may not have people's best intentions at heart. And we, as a community, need to create a well-maintained safe space for youth. And in doing that, it will become safer. I'm sorry, I really didn't prepare much. So I'm kind of talking off the top of my head here. I would also like to point out that skating is an Olympic sport now, and it is one of the few Olympic sports that has a very low barrier cost of entry. You know, here in southwest Colorado, we have a lot of people who ski, who snowboard. Those are very, very expensive sports. The nice thing about skating, especially for kids, is that it's cheap. All you really need is a board, hopefully some safety equipment. And we have a lot of really great organizations like SCYC who help provide that to our local youth. So I would just urge the board, as a skater, as a community member, as somebody who cares about safe spaces for youth, to keep maintaining the skate park. Because what we really need to do is focus on, we need to focus on root barriers that build community, and maintaining safe spaces for youth and for everyone is one of those things that can help us create a better community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Go ahead, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Leslie. I'm an educator, I'm a mom. I'm a friend of youth, and I've lived in a lot of different communities. I've just moved here in the last six months, and I want my kids here with me. We moved here from Leadville, and Leadville has a reputation, people come from all over for that skate park there, and my kids know that. So a little bit selfish in that regard, but you know, this skate park here has been a place that I bring them. They are like, I want to see the skate park here. So when they come and they stay with me, we go to the skate park and we hang out, we connect with kids. That's where they've met a lot of the students that I work with, and we've been able to make some really neat connections. And I see and echo all the same concerns, right? Like, yeah, my kids fall, and they're like definitely more scraped up. And the skate park's not as well-maintained as other ones they've known and have enjoyed. So I think, yeah, I want to emphasize the place of connection, and I also volunteer in the indoor skate park at Beach Street. And I go there to really witness magic. And I encourage and invite you all to come Tuesday nights from eight, or six to eight. Just come witness youth play and connect. And actually, Tuesday nights are all ages, and Wednesday nights are youth. And it's just a really, really special thing. And it transcends barriers, and I think we all need a bit of that, and it brings a lot of hope to me each week to go and share that space. And if we can make wider circles of that, not just at our skate park, but on our streets, and be a more welcoming place, I think that's a reputation we all want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Okay. Thank you all for coming here and speaking to city council, especially if it's your first time, it can be intimidating. And we do have representation from our Parks Department. We have Creighton Raiter, our director, and our new assistant director, Jenny. I'm sorry, I've already forgotten your last name. But we also had a presentation about, this is, you know, they'll address immediate, but long-term, we are looking at a master plan and hope that your community could get involved in that in prioritizing the assets of our park. And we also always struggle to fill our youth positions on our Parks and Recreation Board. So any, just an idea out there too, of getting the youth involved in the kind of decision-making and kind of the nitty-gritty of the Parks Department. So, thank you. All right, we'll end the public participation section of our meeting, and we'll move on to four on our agenda, presentations. Four A is financial statements, presented by City Manager Drew Sanders.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. Our finance director has gone to a conference this week, wasn't able to be here. So I wasn't going to go specifically over the financial statements other than to talk a little bit about how we did last year and where we came in at. As you see in the background section of the agenda item, we had net revenue over expenses of $2.5 million in 2024, which is really good. But I wanted to break that down for council. So general fund revenues that were not expended came in at $994,000, $994,049.27. And then the other 1.5 and change was from the enterprise funds. So out of our $41 million budget, I feel like we did pretty good coming in there. That's a two-edged sword, but I wanted to point out to council and hopefully help you understand, and by extension, the community, that we are managing your money correctly. We're doing our best to make sure that our expenditures are handled appropriately and that you're in good hands. So, any questions from council?
Just that we want to thank Finance Director Kelly Kosky, and we're going to really miss her. She's
We are.
Done incredible work in getting us
Yes.
On good financial track. All right.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Council.
Okay, we're going to move on to five on our agenda, public hearings. Five A is Ordinance Number 1334, presented by Andy Brock, our interim Chief of Police. Andy.
Morning, Mayor and Councilmen, or Council. In 2021, Council approved Ordinance 1286, Series 2021, contracting with Axon Enterprises, Inc. of Scottsdale, Arizona, to provide the police department with tasers, body worn cameras, and cloud storage for the data produced. This is a five-year contract that has expired. We are asking that you again sign a five-year contract with Axon for continuation of the services they provide to include continued support and upgrades as new technology emerges over the next five years. There is an increase in the cost as new services and equipment are being requested. We are asking that we continue to use the Axon 4 Body Cameras and Axon Interview. Axon Interview has been on a separate contract and consolidating our Axon technologies into a single annual payment will simplify administrative processes. We're asking to upgrade the current Taser 7s to Taser 10s. This will be a significant improvement and advancement in de-escalating potentially dangerous situations and absolutely enhancing officer safety. The Taser 7 offers two shots, one for long distance and one for close range. If a single dart does not make contact or disconnects, the device is ineffective. This has occurred on the street and in each of our trainings and demonstrations. The Taser 10 allows for up to 10 deployments and nearly doubles the effective range. More distance provides more safety for both the suspect and the officer. We are asking to add the Axon Draft 1 to the contract. Draft 1 is an advanced AI technology that works hand-in-hand with the Axon Body Cameras. Report writing is the most time-consuming task for an officer, up to 40% of an officer's shift, as reported from Fort Collins Police Department, with similar results reported from other departments. Fort Collins also reported that Draft 1 reduced our report writing time with higher-quality reports by up to 66%. Adding Draft 1 to the contract adds $27,975.92 annually, with the overall cost at $139,629.60 over the five years. The cost is projected to allow for each officer to be on the street an additional 549 hours per year. Officers on the street allow for quicker response time, better operational efficiency, and lead to increased time officers can proactively patrol the city. The financial impact, the proposed new Axon 5 contract includes Axon Interview, Axon Body Worn Camera 4, Taser 10, and Axon Draft 1. Total cost of $593,545.91 paid for over the contract term. The first year would be $131,453.79 and the remaining years in the contract would be $115,523.3. The first year's cost has been included in the approved 2025 budget. And the staff recommends that Council approve the, renewing the new Axon subscription contract. Do you have any questions?
And just had a question on why that first year is roughly $60,000 more than the others. Is there an upfront cost to that or?
We're getting quite a bit of new equipment and so they're regaining some of that cost right away. So that's part of it.
I move that Council approve on second and final reading, Ordinance Number 1334, Series 2025.
Do I need to open this? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry. All right, getting our bearings back. We need to, this is a public hearing, so we need to open this to public comment. Does anyone from the public would like to speak on this topic or this is a Jada item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing portion. Any other discussion or, okay?
Now, now I move that Council approve on second and final reading, Ordinance Number 1334, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the Axon Enterprises, Inc. quote, and the master services and purchasing agreement and related addendums to renew the Axon subscriptions for additional five years.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruul.
Randall. Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Effer.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you, Chief. All right, we're going to move on to six on our agenda, unfinished business. Six A is an award of the 2025 Cathodic Protection Project for Tanks 1, 2, and 3, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, good evening. Council will consider awarding Mountain West Tank Resources a 2025 Cathodic Protection System project. The planned Cathodic Protection System is expected to provide a service life extension for the three tanks for at least six to eight years. The proposals were opened on 10 February 2025, resulting in five proposals. The item went to Council on the February 25th meeting. However, a protest letter was submitted from one of the firms asserting that the lowest bidder, Mountain West, failed to comply with specifications outlined in the city's RFP. Council then chose to table the award so Mountain West could address the bid protests. And there is a letter and we do have Mr. Tom Quaman, who's the President of Mountain West. In case there's any questions, he's here tonight. Staff believes that Mountain West does in fact fulfill the qualifications specified in the RFP. All monies for the Cathodic Protection System project have been budgeted in the 2025 Water Fund Capital Projects account. Cortez has conducted business with Mountain West Tank Resources for the past 14 years with more than satisfactory results. Thus, staff recommends that Council award the 2025 Cathodic Protection System project to Mountain West at their bid price of $48,000. Subject to any questions?
All right, that's quite the range of cost. And what's, I guess, why is it from $48,000 all the way to $389,000? That's a huge difference.
Different techniques, mobilization costs are lower for Mountain West. They also have an innovative approach to their project. I don't know, Tom, if you want to expand on that?
Thank you, Brian. Hi. That's quite a disparity. I wasn't aware of that. I know for us, we've been performing this type of service for hundreds of storage tanks over the last 25 years. And our means and methods, I won't say they're proprietary, but they're certainly proven effective. And I also believe that being in Farmington is a benefit for mobilization, lodging, et cetera. The hard costs for the anodes are set. The technology is a proven method of corrosion control. I don't know why someone would come in at that high a number, honestly, unless they were interpreting the CP system to be a different type, which would be an impressed current system, which could explain that high given the fact that it's three tanks. But for my company and my staff, we're very comfortable with our bid and our process.
Thank you. Any questions for?
No questions.
Okay, hold on. What was the original budget, Brian, for this project? I guess, what did you anticipate it costing?
$60,000.
Okay.
And the only other question I had is what is the life cycle for these cathodes? That, how long do it last? How often do we have to do this?
It extends the life by six to eight years. Is that my understanding?
Correct. The fact that all three of your storage tanks have been recently rehabilitated, the galvanic action will only occur if there's some holiday or a break in the film. So hypothetically, if the coating system was inspected and installed properly, et cetera, those anodes could sit in there for 10, 15, 20 years. It's really a function of the coating job that was applied. So for instance, if a weld seam, which is a common in a steel tank, if there happens to be a break in the film, that galvanic action will deposit on that spot. And these are 20-pound anodes. So when you think of the amount of weight that each anode contains in sacrificial metal, it's going to take quite a bit. Now, I have had, I have been in tanks where we've gone in and replaced anodes in about the 10-year mark because they were, they look like Swiss cheese. They'd literally been depositing and performing. So conservatively, we say six to eight years, that number could easily double.
And Brian, do we have an inspection regime to check and make sure whether they are eroding? And that
Yes. Yeah, we do that.
Right. I believe there's a commitment to come back and check?
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that Council award the 2025 Cathodic Protection System project to Mountain West Tank Resources LLC at its bid price of $48,000 and authorize the City Manager to negotiate and sign a professional services agreement for this purpose on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Spruul.
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Effer.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to seven on our agenda, new business. Seven A is a request for an out-of-city water tap at 10756 Road 26, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, and again, this property is on North Mildred, right past the city boundary. City of Cortez has received an application from Ms. Vincent for an out-of-city water tap on her property. Currently, there is a residence on the property with an existing out-of-city water tap, but Ms. Vincent has applied to the county to build an ADU just to the south of the existing homes and requires a second water tap for the ADU, which is easily accessible to a tap into city water. The cost for the 3/4-inch water tap inside the city limits is normally $7,732, but there's an additional 50% charge for out-of-city water taps. Staff recommends that the application for an out-of-city water tap and pre-annexation agreement be approved. Staff notes that the addition of an ADU on property adjacent to the city limits also supports the city's local housing needs. Subject to any questions?
Madam Mayor, before we vote, I need to disclose that I have been friends with Weeta Vincent for a long time. So I did ask the city attorney if he felt as if that would be a conflict. And he said, given the nature of what we're voting on, that it would not be. There's no fiscal advantage for me personally.
Thanks for sharing.
So Brian, is this property actually already built or is it going to be built?
Well, the ADU hasn't been built yet, but there's already a property that has an out-of-city water tap and this will be a new unit just to the south of the existing facility.
Thank you, Mr. Peckin.
I move that Council approve the application for an out-of-city water tap and pre-annexation agreement submitted by Weeta Vincent for her property located at 10756 Road 26, Cortez, Colorado.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Dobree.
Aye.
Effer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to seven B on our agenda, award of contract professional engineering services, presented by Brian Peckins, our Director of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Council will consider the award for contract professional engineering services to SGM and authorize the City Manager to negotiate and sign a contract with them on behalf of the city. Public Works Department is seeking a qualified engineering firm to provide on-call professional engineering services. The selected firm will also be able to provide core engineering review processes and other services for both community and economic development, parks and rec, and maybe the airport as well. Seven firms submitted proposals. And Public Works has budgeted $140,000 in the Street Improvement Fund to cover contract professional engineering services for 2025. City staff, including representatives from Public Works, Community and Economic Development, and General Services, conducted a review of the seven submitted proposals. Staff believes that SGM is best positioned to fulfill the majority of the city's requirements outlined in the RFP. They have been working for the city successfully since 2015 and it is our recommendation from the selection committee that SGM be chosen for the contract professional engineering services. Subject to any questions?
Is this who we've used in the past?
Yeah. They're currently our on-call engineer. And we're very happy with them. They're our main point of contact, their project manager. Their office is in Durango, but she lives in Mankis and so she can come by very quickly and they're very responsive to our requests. I know they're doing some work for Community and Economic Development right now, some electrical services, and we've just been pleased with their performance.
Thanks for explaining that, Brian. I think that's why the matrix reflects such a high rating from the company. So I appreciate.
I move that Council award the contract for professional engineering services to Schmauser Gordon Meyer Incorporated and authorize the City Manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose. Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Dobree.
Spruul.
Yes.
Effer.
Aye.
Bree.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, we're going to move on to seven C on our agenda, which is Ordinance Number 1335, Series 2025, presented by Patrick Coleman, our City Attorney.
Yeah, Mayor Drew Sanders here, City Manager. Before we go down that road, if I could point out that we do not have a full council this evening and this has been a debated item, that it really seems prudent to have a full council on hand before we do this. So I would like to suggest to the council that you consider tabling this to a future date when we know we're going to have a full council. And I would submit that to you for your consideration.
All right. Discussion, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I just have a few things outlined here. I just want to forward to the council. Many of these are just comments, food for thought, but I just want to share these with a group. First of all, when we, if we get to the point where we vote on this, we have to remember that every time we vote, we're voting what's best for the city, not as an individual. And in my case, I respect every council member here and it's more important to me to hear from a council member than be absent. The dynamics are different when we only have enough people for a quorum. One thing I would share with you is, if you haven't done this already, to go in and research city councils that do have this in place already because many of them have a lot of requirements or restrictions that we haven't even talked about. And I think it's, the more information we have, the better informed our decision-making will be. When, at our last council meeting, Sam Light from SERESA brought this up and he said, you know, make sure you have everything in place before you move forward with this. Make sure you have your policies in place. So what I'm proposing is to table this first reading until we have had some experience with this. What I would like to do is have a trial run to see how effective this works, to see if there's any glitches. I think we need to take it for a test run before we vote on this. The other thing that I haven't heard is, are there going to be any additional expenses? And if so, what would those expenses be to have this teleconferencing in place? Let's see, what else do it have? I think that's about it. But I just feel at this point in time, we are not But I just feel, at this point in time, we are not prepared to, to make a good decision on, on this right now, and I think it's best that we table it until we do have that experience to take this for a test run.
That raises a question. Is it possible to do a test run without actually changing the ordinance, without bringing this forward?
Well, council member, mayor and council, as it turns out, it actually is. Councilmember Dehaven has indicated she would not be able to attend the next meeting, the first one in April, and has requested that we actually try this out, or she would like to try to appear remotely. And so, we do have the capability to do that. We just need to know in advance and so on. And just quickly to ask, or to answer the question about additional costs, we have the software in hand. We would use our existing Advia system. The cost really comes down to staff time that we have to dedicate, and we do have to do some staff training, especially in the projection booth, but also some council training on how to do it. It's going to be kind of technical to make sure that we don't have any serious problems, and, you know, even if we go through all that, there could be some, some hitches. But just short answer, counselor, yes, two weeks from now, we, we can actually do that, and let's see how it goes. And, and that would indicate that we don't, we still would not have a full council at that time, so this would not.
I, I do still just want to raise the objection. I, I do think that this violates our charter. I, I think our charter prescribes how we have our meetings, and also says that all the powers of council shall be exercised in the manner prescribed by the charter. If the manner is not prescribed, then such a manner may be prescribed by ordinance. So, I, I don't think that this power has been delegated to us. But, setting that aside for a moment, I think no matter, no matter what we do, I think it should be tabled for tonight, because I do think we should have a full council when we're, when we're making this decision.
Thank you. I'm going to advocate for that as well, because a current council member who's not here is on maternity leave with an eight-week-old baby, and this is an important topic to her as well, so I think we need to make sure that we include all of our voices.
I concur with that as well.
I move that council table the first reading of ordinance number 1335, series 2025, and then, and that staff put it on the agenda for a meeting at which all council members are expected to be in attendance.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Effer.
Effer.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis. Randall. Medina.
Aye. Thank you, council.
All right, we're going to move on to seven D on our agenda, appointment to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board, presented by Linda Smith, our city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This evening, council interviewed two applicants interested in serving on the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board. I apologize, on my memo, I had three applications that had been received. That is correct. I did receive three applications, and when I called the interested participants, they, one of them had decided he didn't want to be interviewed. So, I do apologize for having three written there. The two that were interested were interviewed, and council can appoint them, or we can continue to advertise for the openings. The seats would be for a two-year term, as Abraham Prophet and Michael Levy, Michael Levy's term ended, and Abraham had just resigned, and his term was up as well.
I move that council appoint Randy McKnight and Matthew Carries to the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board for a two-year term.
Second.
Motion made by Randall and seconded by Lewis.
Randall. Effer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to number eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinance, as we have none. So, number nine on our agenda is a city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Great. Number 10 is a city manager report.
Yeah, Mayor, I do not have a report for you this evening.
All right, number 11 is city council committee reports. 11A is the mayor's report on the workshop. So, tonight, we, on our workshop, we interviewed our two candidates for the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Advisory Board, which we just approved to the board. And then, we had a presentation from our Creighton Wright, our Parks and Recreation Director, about our Parks and Recreation Master Plan that we're going to be working on, that would lay out a tenure plan and the priorities and the funding behind our park system. And there's going to be, an important aspect of that is the community input, and so I encourage you all to pay attention to this, to be engaged while this process goes on when we get a firm to help us create our master plan. And then, we had a presentation about rec-trek, which is upgrades at our rec center, which is going to be more digital, allowing people to pay online, there's going to be a website, and that is just starting to be up and running, so there'll be, I'm assuming, an update online for that, okay? And then, we had a general council discussion, and council member Spruul brought up the confusing speed limit signs on South Broadway that CDOT put in after there's, a study they did to slow down the speed limit, and our concern is that the speed limit signs kind of contradict each other and add confusion. So, our city manager is going to kind of re-engage CDOT or continue that conversation on the, the safety of South Broadway near the middle school. All right, so then, we will move on to 11B, other board reports. Council member Effer.
Just let everyone know that they've begun the much-needed stucco repair on the clubhouse at the golf course, and this Friday at 7:00 AM, we will be having a golf advisory meeting.
The next Mesa Verde Country meeting is next, next week.
Okay. And then, normally, I would have had a Colorado Municipal League Board meeting last week, but I had to miss that board meeting for the funeral of former Mayor Orly Lucero. It was a great honor to Mr. Lucero. He was on city council for 16 years, and Linda helped me recognize all of the accomplishments that had happened during his tenure, the building of the rec center, partnerships, the moving of the high school, the purchasing of that land for future park. It was quite a long list of accomplishments and things that we just are used to having now, so it was just great to honor Orly with the community. All right, number 12 on our agenda is executive session. We have none tonight. So, 13 is our second section of public participation. Do we have anyone else from the audience we haven't heard from who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dobree.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Effer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ruhl.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye.
All right, thank you all for being here tonight.